I'm gonna call this meeting to order. The time is 7:32. This is the regular council meeting of November 9th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Councilman Bliss?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Clark?
Also here.
Councilman Corbett? Councilman Geddings?
Yes, I'm here.
Councilor Rorback?
I'm here.
Mayor Portem Saltes?
I'm here.
Mayor Grexey?
I'm here, thank you. And can someone please make a motion to excuse Councilman Corbett? He did give notice.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Corbett.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilman Bliss?
I'll second.
Great, thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings? Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Saltes?
Yes.
Mayor Grexey.
Oh, yes, thank you. The invocation this evening is going to be led by Councilman Geddings and then he will also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Geddings?
Yes, ma'am. We thank God for having given us this opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding. Enrich our hearts with compassion and courage. And again, receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Thank you. If you could please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Geddings, if you'd like to lead us in that as well?
Yes, ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening? All right. All right, seeing none. We have... All right, first up, we have meeting open to the public. So this is the time when the public can address council. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and if you could please give us your name, address, any affiliation with the city. We ask that everybody stay on mute unless you are talking, but please wave or make some kind of motion so that we know that you do want to make a comment. With that, I'm gonna open up. Anyone who wants... Aaron. Aaron's iPhone. You may go, please. You are...
Hi, I'm Erin. I live at 504 East 12 Mile, right across from the urgent care right there. I have a two-year-old, so dealing with this urgent care has been very frustrating. The traffic from this urgent care because there's no limit on how many people, like patients, that they see is unsafe. I don't even feel safe taking my son out on a walk on our own street because these cars whip into our driveway. They, you know, they park in my driveway. I've had to address that several times. They walk across my front lawn. I live in kind of an awkward spot, so there is a parking lot on the other side of my house. So they will park in the other parking lot, walk across my lawn all day long, and these are people getting tested for COVID. You know, I'm almost five months pregnant and I have a two-year-old, so I don't need all of this. You know, I've lived in this house for almost two years and I've never had an issue up until this COVID thing, but they are not controlling what's going on. And there's masks in my yard, there's gloves in my yard. You know, they do have like a security guard out there, but he watches all of this go on. You know, there's, there's no way an emergency vehicle can make it down our street half the time because cars are parked on the wrong side of the street. I actually had to have a no parking sign by the city put up right in front of my house. On garbage day, you're not allowed to park in the street, and several people park on the street. The whole street's filled. I couldn't even make it to an appointment the other day on time because I couldn't get down with the garbage truck. So it's just been like, it's just not safe, and I get that they, people need to be tested for COVID, and I understand that. But there's no control over the situation at all and no limit to people. I mean, there's people lying down 12 Mile. It's, it's, and there's no social distancing going on. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous how busy they are. You know, at any other place, you have to make appointments or you have to, can only have so many people in one spot. So I just don't, you know, it, I just feel that it needs to be better controlled because it's made it very frustrating and difficult to live there.
Okay. Thank you. I, I'm sorry that you're going through that. I can tell you that the city is looking into that, and I do appreciate... I do appreciate your comments, and, and I am making a note of that. But thank you.
Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Erin, and good luck with your pregnancy and your toddler.
Thank you.
All right. There anyone else? Who, okay, I see, I see a Michelle and I see a Becky, so I'm gonna go with Michelle and then I'm gonna go with Becky. Okay, Michelle, please.
I'm actually calling for the same reason, just to give a few more notes that we can't even get out of our driveway sometimes because they're parked at the end of our driveway. We couldn't, I was in Honk there for 10 minutes, and we're right next door to the urgent care, and we're finding gloves and masks all in our yard. The trash day, like she said, I have pictures of how bad things are, and I could print them and send them to you guys. There was part, people parked on both sides that if an ambulance couldn't get by here, that would be sad. And then we had one that had his hazards lights on that was parked across the street where there's no parking with somebody else behind him. Then other cars were going around, so the people that were turning onto 12 Mile to Dalton couldn't get here. And I've got videos of all of that. It's just been a nightmare, and we've had, I've had the doctor on my lawn taking care of a patient parked in front. And I have, I have a camera, a picture of that. I have a video of him taking care of someone down the street, and that's what Becky's also gonna talk about. We're all having really bad issues here, and it's been really frustrating.
Thank you for sharing. And Ms. Palazzo, just so you know, Palazzola, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that. I did get your email. I don't know if I responded back to you, but I, we, we are looking into it. So I, I do appreciate, and I'm sorry that, that you are having this issue. I can tell you, we are looking into it. All right, thank you. And Becky, I said you were next.
Hi, my name is Becky. I also live on Dalton Street. We actually live kind of in a line. And I'm calling with the urgent care as well, and I will mention that Councilwoman Clark did bring it up, I believe, at the end of one of the council meetings last month or the month previous. So this has been an ongoing issue with, with this particular clinic, and the traffic is atrocious. I have two sets of twins, and there are small front yards. I actively put something in my driveway so they could stop turning around in my driveway because my children play there. Yesterday, or the day before, a young woman hit it. She hit what I had put in my driveway. When I said, "Hey, what are you doing?", she mentioned, "Oh, I didn't see it." And I was like, "Well, imagine if that was my small child in my driveway." That's an issue. I have called the clinic many times. They keep claiming that they are taking care of the issue, or, "Oh, that shouldn't have happened." They had a nice young man named James come by and explain that, "Oh, if you have any trouble, you just let me know." Well, James, we do have trouble, and you're not taking care of it. Also, um... The turning around in driveways, the double parking, the excessive traffic, the blocking off of fire hydrants. The, it's seriously a never-ending parade. I want people to get tested, don't get me wrong. It is a never-ending parade of people. Come, you're welcome, any councilperson, please come and sit with me on my porch from a social distance, and you will see dozens and dozens of people every single day, and they're open until 9:00 PM. So they're out there right now. And then also, parking at the school. I called the school, and they are aware that the urgent care is also parking at the school, and they had mentioned that they will be in contact with the city. I also have pictures, and the most disgusting thing that I've seen so far is I saw a medical doctor, I believe, she wouldn't identify herself, talk to a patient like two houses down, and take her stethoscope and listen to this woman's breath sounds on the sidewalk. Now, my question to you is, would you be okay with someone who potentially has COVID getting medical attention on a sidewalk of a suburban public, like neighborhood? And what's the limit on what medical procedures can be done on a sidewalk? Like, where are we gonna draw the limit here? So, and the doctor wouldn't tell me her name. I did follow up. The clinic assures me that they will do something about this. And you know, honestly, the thing that, in my opinion, could fix this is appointments. Have appointments. Require appointments. That way, you only have so many people, you know, per hour parking in the parking lot that they can fit less traffic. The cops will stop getting phone calls about traffic. They can be doing other things that are important, and everyone can get tested in a timely manner. It will say, "Thank you so much for listening to..." You can tell I'm getting, I'm getting a little upset. So thank you so much to listening to me and my neighbors because this truly is not just us whining or complaining. This is a major issue in our lives right now, and we want a solution. So thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you all for calling in to, to talk to us about this. We are listening, and I can tell you, I drive by there at least three times a week, and I see the line, so I don't live down the street the way that you do. But I do understand what you're saying, and we've actually asked Chief Haynes to look into that, and he is going to speak tonight. Chief Haynes, are you available right now to talk?
Yes, I am, Your Honor. I just didn't know if, if there was any other people that wanted to speak first, then I can, I can chime in after that.
Okay, I see, I have Kelly Marshall wanted to say something about this. If you unmute, Kelly?
All right, so, hey, how you guys doing? So me and my fiancee live down the street, and we live right next to Becky, and here's the thing. We, we are in the same boat with all of our neighbors. Not, I've caught the doctors numerous times giving tests right in front of the front yard. I can't have my kids go out there, and let alone, I know Becky's kids are out there more than my kids because my kids are only here on the weekends. You know, I have pictures of gloves, prescription bottles, everything being in our neighborhood. Now, it's getting to the point where if they're blocking our driveways when they park, that's, I mean, what happens if we had an emergency? That's, I mean, that's, that's ridiculous. Now, like I said, numerous nurses, doctors going out there, and then on top of that, we have the fire hydrant right in front of our yard. Me and my fiancee both have got tickets, and we've parked, you know, about 10 feet away. So now, they're like right in front of it. So I feel bad calling, you know, the police because I feel like I'm wasting their time, and the, you know, the attitude I get from them is that I am wasting their time by calling. But then again, what happens if something was to happen as an emergency, someone's house, you know, was a catch on fire, and they need that fire hydrant? What's gonna happen? You know, it's just one of those things that the urgent care, they could say they're working on it, but they don't care. Because at the end of the day, they're more worried about their money that they're getting than anything. And this is, I mean, I've caught people out there smoking weed, and it's ridiculous. Like I said, I have the pictures to prove it. If you guys want me to email them to you, I am more than gladly. I'm a veteran. I've been in the Army for 10 years, and I am still serving, you know, and, you know, it's just one of those things that I don't want my kids to, you know, deal with this, and now we're even thinking about putting our house for sale and moving because of this. And, you know, I'll let my girlfriend talk, and she can tell you guys more. It's just, it's frustrating because I feel like the urgent care is not doing enough, and I hate to waste the police's time when they can be dealing with something else other than giving a parking ticket to someone parking in front of a fire hydrant.
And I feel the same, and just quickly, I'm just saying the same thing. I've called the urgent care. It's a three-hour wait. You're not allowed to leave. You're not allowed to leave. That's why there's so many cars. So why is there not like a process? It's just unbelievable, and I really, I really want to move because of this problem. And it's so unfortunate that all of us down the street, and I know the street right next to us, we all have to deal with this, and we have been dealing with it, and it's just... I just never thought, yeah, obviously, everything with coronavirus, I mean, we never thought would be a problem, but there has to be something that can be, happen to make us feel safer as residents of Madison Heights. So, thank you for listening to us.
Thank you, and thank you for your service as well. Is there anyone else who wanted to talk right now? Let's just say, is there anyone who wants to talk specifically about this before Chief Haynes speaks? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone who wanted to talk about this, so Chief Haynes, if you could comment, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. First and foremost, you know, I do feel for these residents in, in the neighborhood there. I have been down there almost on a daily basis. But let me tell you a few of the things that we've tried to do that have not been so successful. Some have been, some haven't. But we've been down there, like I said, almost every day. We've had multiple calls there, but we also are doing extra checks there throughout the day when we can. I mean, obviously, we only have so many cars on the road, and we can only get there so often. And some of these things undoubtedly happen before we can get there. I mean, some of that's not in our control. But what is in our control is we have been issuing tickets. Again, it doesn't solve anything because the person sits there, the car stays there with the ticket on it until they decide to leave anyway. So although they may be getting a fine at the end of the day, it's not changing the pattern of conduct that's going on there. Next, we've had multiple conversations with management at the doctor's office. They're not going to change the way they're doing things. They've told us that they refuse to have by appointment only. And there's no law in the city that I know of or in the state that can require them to be by appointment only, which is part of the problem. They're having, you know, 50 people show up and wait in line, and then 25 people are showing up on top of them. So it's just compounding the problem. We did go down there with code enforcement as well, and we advised them that they will be receiving violations for any and all debris that can be associated to their clinic, and they've been a little bit better with that. But again, they're, they're controlling what's on their premises, but unfortunately, the majority of traffic is off their premises. It's in the subdivision. Further, we installed temporary no parking signs on the, will be the west side of the street. And the reason that we did that is because the cars were backing up and parking there, that it created a traffic hazard situation. Cars coming northbound could not see to get out onto 12 Mile, and vehicles that were trying to turn south onto the side street were going head-on with vehicles, you know, that were proceeding north. So it was a traffic danger that we decided that we needed to temporarily make that no parking. So that has been being enforced, but unfortunately, because it's temporary signage, we've had some of the people from the clinic, although we don't know who they are, they have moved the signs on several occasions on us. So we've had to keep up with that with DPS. Further, I had the building inspector go down there and speak to them about building capacity, as well as the fire marshal. Spoke with them about capacities. I recently again spoke with the Oakland County Health Department, the health department, because anybody that drives by there can see that they're not social distancing like they should be, which in this case, if you're going there to be tested for COVID, there should be a, a protocol anyway that you're standing more than six feet apart. Because if you're going there, chances are you're having symptoms of COVID. So another issue that, again, we really don't have the enforcement ability, but I've called the health department. I've spoke with the chief security officer at the health department. She assures me that she's going to give them another call tomorrow and explain to them what the law is and what they're supposed to be doing. But again, they have no answers for us either. It's, it's very frustrating. It's, I can't imagine living there because I know how frustrated I am as the chief of police that I, I've done all these things and have not having a positive change on what's going on. So we're gonna continue to do the extra checks. We're gonna continue to issue tickets, and we'll continue to monitor the situation. And as much and as often as I can, I will continue to follow up with reports to the health department.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Well, this is probably not the format, but perhaps in closing comments, someone could see if there's something that we could legally do to check with the county on that.
Hey, I don't, I don't wanna interrupt you. Um, just real quick, I just, like, honestly, like, I, should we still be calling? Because honestly, like, I feel like us as residents, we're wasting your guys' time, and I know what the right and wrong is. And I just feel like, honestly, like, when I do call the police, I feel like it's more of a burden to you guys.
Okay, so, hold, hold that thought, hold that thought, okay? Chief Haynes, should they keep calling you, or should people be calling the county? Because nobody wants to waste anybody's time, and I think we're, if we didn't know before tonight, everyone on council is now aware of this issue, so what is the best for our residents? You know, is, should we be calling you, or should we be calling, contacting the county?
Personally, I would recommend both. I, there, there may be a sense of frustration when you get to the dispatchers. If, you know, if they're busy and there's other things going on, but it's not directed towards, it's really directed towards the clinic itself because we cannot seem to get to a middle ground, and, and I don't see it happening anytime soon. Unfortunately, this is going along, obviously, with COVID-19, and now that we're seeing the serious spike in COVID-19, I can only imagine that it's gonna continue, and, and it's going to get worse. But I don't want anybody to ever feel that calling on a minor violation is a burden to the police department because it isn't. That's what we're here for. It just, sometimes, if we're on other runs or other, you know, dealing with other priority issues, it takes us longer to get there, and sometimes by the time we get there, the violation is no longer there. So, you know, that's just part of the burden of, of what we have to do. But again, you know, it, it doesn't hurt to call us, but it certainly would not hurt to call the health department and let them know what's going on because, again, like any other agency, the more calls they get, they're gonna be forced to deal with it in a little bit different manner. And I'm, I'm kinda shocked myself, and just to throw this out there, I mean, of all the clinics all around Madison Heights that have the rapid test kits, this is the only clinic I know of that's off the grid like this. And, and I think, I think the residents hit the nail on the head when they said that this is the only place that really is not requiring appointments to be made. They're just trying to make as much money as they possibly can during this time, and unfortunately, we're having problems trying to get a hold on it, so.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone, for calling in. So there is your answer. Please contact the police. Recognize when you hear frustration. It's the frustration with the clinic, not with you. And if perhaps during the meeting, someone, perhaps Mrs. Marsh, could find the phone number for the county that people need to contact, we can provide that to you so that you can call them. And I'm making notes to see if there's something that we can do to put some pressure on the county. I don't know how these clinics are licensed, but they're creating a health and safety issue in my city and, and our city. And so we, we need to have that addressed, okay? All right, Michelle, I'm gonna let you talk for just one minute and then wanna continue on with the meeting.
I just forgot to say that I was also threatened, and a lady was gonna come on to my yard and kick my butt. I won't say the words she used. But I've been threatened too, so I don't even feel safe over here.
Thank you. That, that's absolutely unacceptable, and definitely, if you are being threatened, you need to call the police. All right. Thank you, everyone, for, for speaking on this issue. We are looking into it. Is there anyone else in the public who has anything that they would like to say during public comment? I am not seeing... All right. I am not seeing anything, so I am going to close meeting to the public. And we'll continue on with the rest of the meeting, and the first up is item D, report. We have the first one from the city manager. Resolution Supporting Medicare for All Act of 2019. This was postponed from October 26. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report? Did we lose Mrs. Marsh?
He's muted.
Sorry, I couldn't tell.
Okay.
City council has requested to consider the Resolution Supporting Medicare for All Act of 2019 and to call on federal legislators to work towards its immediate enactment. City council is being asked to consider this resolution, and if approved, authorize staff to send copies to our federal legislatures.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Mayor Portem Saltes?
Yeah, I'd like to make a res, or excuse me, a motion to support the Resolution Supporting Medicare for All Act of 2019, please.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
I'll support.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilman Bliss?
Mayor Portem Saltes can go first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mayor Portem Saltes.
Well, I'm gonna be a little bit longer, so if, uh...
Please, go ahead. Go ahead. Your, your floor is yours. I can't keep it after people.
Okay. So this, this resolution is, is real personal to me. I, you know, obviously, I, I'm passionate about the subject. I've been in healthcare for nearly 20 years, many different roles. I started in EMS in the front lines, and then to the hospitals and ER and hospice. But with all, within all these, excuse me, experiences, one thing that rings true is that healthcare, in my opinion, should be treated as a human right. But in our country, there's been a long history of attacking this concept, even way back in 1911. There has been and is currently a battle waged between all Americans that cannot live without healthcare at some point in their life, and those who stand to lose billions, if not trillions, of dollars with private healthcare insurance companies and the whole healthcare money-driven system. Again, as in America, it always boils down to the rich against the poor, unfortunately. And this resolution states that a, a number of Americans without health insurance is well over 30 million, and climbing. And with 26 million Americans filing for unemployment, that was way back in April of 2020, and 40 million Americans are underinsured, which means they don't have enough insurance, and at least 45,000 die each year because they don't have health insurance, and it's rising because not affording health insurance and not mentioning how many Americans who have insurance but then go broke because they, or bankrupt because they have to pay all the co-pays and deductible and thousands of dollars. This human right, excuse me, this healthcare human right exists in every other industrial country. And it's been decimated in our country by the countless powerful lobbying groups and therefore Congress themselves. I read this eye-opening book called The Deadly Spin, which is authored by Inside Whistleblower, Wendell Potter, which documents an onslaught of destroying any attempt to create universal healthcare in America. I got it here. I'm not plugging it, but it's called Deadly Spin. I just wanna read a quick quote in here. It's to get people to understand, you know, why this is important. He says on page two, "If you among those who believe that United States is the best healthcare system in the world, despite overwhelming evidence to the contrary, it's because my fellow spinmeisters and I succeeded brilliantly in what we were paid very well to do with our premium dollars. In fact, the United States ranks 47th in like expect, expectancies at birth behind Bosnia and 54th behind Bangladesh. In fairness, a measure of the extent to which best care is available equally throughout a country. And if you are persuaded that the healthcare reform bill President Barack Obama signed into law in March 2000, excuse me, 2010 was a government takeover of the healthcare system, my former colleagues and I earned every penny of our handsome salaries, not to mention our bonuses." So it's, it's a real eye-opener. It goes into more depth, but I did a little digging with some very interesting statistics. This year, 20, excuse me, 2020 election cycle so far, four private medical insurance companies, Blue Cross-Buy Shield, Health, United Health, CBS, and Health Insignia gave a total of $4.5 million this year, and not surprising, $2.3 million to the Democrats in Congress. In 2018 election cycle, drug companies positioned... In 2018 election cycle, drug companies, physician groups, and other healthcare lobbyists gave $225 million to federal candidates and political parties. And from 1998, going way back to 2020, these lobbying groups, like Wendell Potter Exposes, gave a whopping close to $9 billion. Let me say that again, $9 billion to stop this universal healthcare. Do you know how many lives we could save with $9 billion? Currently, we have a president and a republic, Republicans that are making healthcare situations even worse for trying to eradicate Affordable Healthcare Act with its pre-existing conditions, which to me is immoral. And an indifferent subject related, it's a, to me, it seems to be a joke that conservatives and Republicans, especially while our, our former, well, soon to be former president, who says that, "Don't be afraid of COVID", but he exemplifies the blatant disregard of human life when he says that, knowing full well that when he got it, he had 50 doctors designated to him, a whole ICU unit, the whole hospital floor. There was no waiting for treatment. He had all the experimental drugs, everything he could ask for. To me, that's very shameful. Or especially when they start yelling socialism. Socialism, isn't that the treatment he got? He certainly didn't have to pay for it. So this double talk equating universal healthcare and socialism stems way back again. Politicians always bring up, when it's convenient, Ronald Reagan even called Medicare socialism before, because they know that word scares ordinary Americans. Whenever Republicans and the super-rich lobbyists want to kill an idea, they always scream socialism. But ironically, in fact, how many billions or trillions of dollars does the American people, unbeknownst to them, unbeknownst to us, subsidize already profitable corporations like the oil industry? Remember, we were paying $5 an hour, or excuse me, $5 a gallon? And yep, the oil companies were still getting millions of dollars in subsidies. Did they call that socialism or corporate welfare? No, they didn't. Of course not. And how about when the US war machine got all cranked up about 20 years, for 20-year war in the Middle East and started over to lie about Iraq and the weapons of mass destruction? Defense contractors made out like bandits. Was that called socialism? No, it was not. Our elected government handed out $760 billion to that war. That comes to, if you equate it, that comes to every American given $8,000 out of their own pocket and added a trillion dollars to the US debt. The most egregious obscenity of corporate socialism was the $1.5 million trillion. Every American had to bail out the American banks and financial institutions for all those years of obscene greed. And then the president, Republicans, conservatives, and others have audacity to look the public in the face and call saving human life as socialism. Well, United States priorities, again, the rich get richer and the poor get poorer. So even though this resolution is symbolic, my hope is that it sparks a wave of healthcare justice and rides all the way to the newly-elected coming president, new coming President Biden. And instead of throwing out Obamacare like Trump wants to do, we put in a President-elect Biden that does the moral thing and puts America on a moral course to believe and legislate that healthcare is a human right. And I just want to, last point I want to make is the health, excuse me, the quote from Mark Dark, excuse me, Dr. Martin Luther King said decades ago that all the forms of inequality, healthcare is the most shocking and inhumane. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Clark, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, but I think Mark was next in line.
Okay, all right. Councilman Bliss, did you want to go next?
Sure, Your Honor. So I really appreciate Mayor Protem Soltis's passion here. And honestly, affordable and accessible healthcare for all, regardless of their employment situation, is something I'd personally like to see. But I've always been opposed to symbolic resolutions like this that don't directly affect the city and our specific level of government. I think now more than ever, we've got to be very purposeful with our city resources. Infrastructure, budgeting, public safety, they've all been significantly impacted by this pandemic. And as evidenced by the public comments that we just heard, new challenges keep popping up all across the board, that even the 30 to 60 minutes that staff spent on this should be directed to situations like that. I just believe we need to focus every minute of the city manager's time and our legal team's time, anything that they can make available on their chaotic schedule to things that we can actually control, that we can actually legislate on. And this is very, very much outside of our pay grade. So I'm going to have to vote no here. I will be sending a personal email to the offices of our federal representatives. But to me, anything additional outside of that is, is wasting resources that could have otherwise been redirected to areas of need in our city. So I appreciate the passion. I'll be voting no. And I'd like to request a roll call vote as well, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark, you are next.
Yes, so that's an interesting perspective, Mark. Because here's how I look at it, and this is why I got into politics in general. And maybe, Mr. Sherman, you can explain. We have a lot of residents here this evening. We have more than 40 people watching on Facebook, and we have about 20, close to 20, watching here. And now that all of these members of the community are at every meeting, so maybe when I'm finished speaking, you can explain to them what a resolution is. But here's my understanding of it. A resolution could be considered largely symbolic, yes. But what it does is, when we adopt a resolution to say that we want advancement of healthcare for all, is Madison Heights going to give healthcare to all of our residents? No, we can't do that. It's outside of the boundaries of what it is that we can do. But what it does is it tells our state legislators that we're ready to move on that, that this local government is ready to say, "Let's make some moves on healthcare." And when we show up and we make resolutions like this, it's very similar to what happens when our residents show up to our meetings and they come and they speak up about issues that they're having in the community and they demand action from their leaders. So when we make a resolution, we're actually demanding action from our leaders. We're saying, "This city's here. This city's ready to take this on. We recognize it as a problem within our community, and we want action from you, and we want you to move forward on it." And does it stop at the resolution? No. And maybe this is why Mark sort of has a hard time with it. Takes a lot of extra legwork, takes a lot of extra action on our part for us to speak up about that. So we can't sit and do the bare minimum on city council and also act on this. We also have to push our legislatures even beyond the resolution. But when we adopt the resolution as a city, we tell our city residents that this issue is equally as important to us as it is to them, and that we're ready to go to bat for them. So I'll be voting yes on this this evening, because it is something that I'm passionate about. Before I got on to city council, I went more than five years without any kind of healthcare. And because I'm on city council now, I'm afforded dental insurance, which I was able to use to fix a lot of the problems that I had in my mouth that were causing bad problems to my health. So for sure, I'll be voting yes on this measure. And I really thank you, Dave Soltis, not only for taking the time to explain all of those statistics, to show your community that you're in touch with all of their concerns, but to explain why it's important that we get behind it. Thank you very much.
Your Honor. Do you want to speak, or did you want to continue with counsel?
The only comment I would make, Your Honor, is that if the resolution were to pass, it's a non-binding act. And, and Councilman Bliss has expressed his opinion in the past relating to, you know, resolutions that don't have, that don't have the, the full effect of laws. It's directing, it's, it's making a statement essentially, if the majority of council were to pass it and directing it to our federal government to consider the issue.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Soltis, you wanted to quickly say something else?
Yes, I, I just wanted, for the record, I understand Councilman Bliss's point of view. I think we've been kind of battling that since we both came on at the same time. But however, in this resolution, I pretty much wrote it and compiled it. So I think it took about 10 minutes, if that, of, of city time.
Okay, thank you. Any other member of council who wanted to say something?
Your Honor.
Councilor Warback?
Yeah, I just, I do want to, to agree with Mr. Soltis that no person should have to go bankrupt because they're sick. When I think about, I, I've had, I had a good friend that I worked with for years that worked 39 hours a week. And so her employer, our employer, did not afford her health insurance. And so she waited for weeks and weeks and weeks when she felt a lump in her breast until, because she had two young kids and was worried about being able to pay her rent and the doctor's bills that she knew she was going to get just to go for a checkup. And when she finally went for a checkup, they found stage IV breast cancer, and she died within three weeks. It was heartbreaking. And that is just one person. And that is one person whose story is repeated over and over and over and over again. And nobody deserves that. We all, in this wonderful country of ours, deserve to be treated with, with dignity. And dignity includes a, dignity includes this access to high-quality healthcare. And so I agree that, you know, this is, you know, as a non-binding resolution, all of these things, it is largely symbolic, but the symbolism is important. As I've said before, symbols are important. And when we, when we use our voices at every level of government, it makes an impact. And so I, I am going to be putting yes on this tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Gettings, if you had anything to say? Wanted to make sure counsel had an opportunity to speak before I did.
All set. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure everyone had a chance to speak. So I grew up in Ontario, and I was covered from birth under OHIP, which is Ontario Health Insurance Program, I think. I don't actually even know what the acronym is. But, so I grew up with it. And when I moved here, the biggest question that I had from people was, "What are you going to do about health insurance?" And what I knew about American health insurance was what I had seen in the movies and I had seen on TV and the horrific story that Counselor Warback just told us. I saw that in movies. I saw that layout in shows. You know, people who had to choose between food and healthcare, rent and healthcare, their prescriptions watering down their medicine to make it last longer. That's all I knew about the American healthcare. That, plus the fact that I took courses on health insurance and employee benefits, and I had the research and the education and found out that actually, we are, I'm sorry, I think it was Mr. Soltis who said that we are the only industrialized country that does not have some form of universal healthcare, paraphrasing this. And that's true. And that's because when all the other countries decided that they were going to do it, the states decided they weren't going to do it because their business lobbyists said, "No, no, we'll attach it to the jobs." And that's what happened. That's what the history of that is. And for better or for worse, that's what it is. Businesses who understand, you know, business people who understand good business practice, understand that prevention and healthcare is good for business. So many companies offer free flu shots. They offer preventative programs. They do this. And business people as a whole, or most business people that I talk to, understand that it's fiscally more responsible and better for the economy to have healthcare and to, and not healthcare in the sense of going afterwards and getting it taken care of, but healthcare in the sense of prevention. And the story that Counselor Warback just told us, if you take out the human aspect of it and you look strictly at the numbers, taking care of someone preventatively, having a mammogram, having to have minor surgery really early on versus having to treat that or any situation, having to treat it down the road, take out the human part of it and just look at it at the numbers, it's more fiscally responsible to have the prevention. So I do believe that we do need to have some kind of program worldwide, not just nationally and not just at the state level. I do believe that. And I have had that conversation with our congressman. I believe I had it with our current and our former congressman. However, I also agree with Mr. Bliss that it is not the purview of our local council to do that. And while I appreciate that he is going to be sending a letter on his own, I've had these conversations and, and I will continue to have these conversations. And I would encourage all of council and all of our residents who feel this way as well to lobby your federal or state, whichever you feel needs to be addressing this. But I will also be voting no on this tonight. So I thank you for your comments. I thank you, Mr. Soltis, for bringing this up and allowing us to have this conversation. If there are no other comments from council?
I have one more question, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
So just as a reminder to, like, everyone watching in on this democratic process, one, I'll thank Dave Soltis for hitting the ground running right after the election with this big issue. But what happens when cities make resolutions like this is neighboring cities start to see this is potentially an example of leadership, and then they start to adopt similar resolutions. And this is similar to what happened with gay marriage. So when cities start to adopt these resolutions, saying that these are things that they want, and they're putting more pressure on their state legislators, eventually, all the cities adopt it. The state starts to recognize it. And then the state starts to implement measures to take care of what's within the best, like, public interest. So when we don't make symbolic gestures like this, then that never gets, like, sent to the table. So it's important to do this. And since, since this is largely symbolic, Mr. Bliss and Mayor Graffstein, and you won't have to do any extra work outside of this, and Dave Soltis has already put in the time to write the measure, voting yes on it would only just send that message that it's an important issue to our city and an important issue to our residents, and that it's something we'd like to see our legislation take action on. So even if it was just voting yes on this tonight as a quick little symbolic gesture to let your residents know that you care about this issue, even if it's nothing that we can bind to or put any action outside of our, like, free time on, it is a, it is a very small little gesture you can make for your residents. So I'm going to vote yes. Again, I would encourage the rest of council to vote yes, since we've all established it's a symbolic gesture, and the work's already been put into it. So voting yes isn't going to put you out any.
Mr. Soltis, I actually have a quick question for you. I read Deadly Spin probably about eight or 10 years ago, and I've read several of these books. So was Wendell Clark one of those people who was setting up those free clinics? Do you remember? Because you just, I haven't read it in years. Was he someone who was doing that? Do you remember?
Well, when he was a public relations for Insignia, no.
After, after, when, when he realized that.
I think he is doing some type of that work now. He's trying to make, I guess he said something in his book that he's trying to make amends for everything that he shouldn't have done in the first place.
Okay, I can't remember, because it's been a while since I've read this. He has a book, I think Sally Pipes had a book about, about healthcare. There are, there are a lot of them out there. And there are programs out there where people do offer the free healthcare. And what I would love to see is any of our medical personnel in the city, they're the ones who are on the ground. I would love to see them contact our state and federal legislatures as well, because, you know, Councilwoman Clark had a, had a firsthand story. Counselor Warback had one. You know, I think that if we can get people who are actually in the field doing that, that would be great as well.
Yeah, there is, oh, Your Honor, I'm sorry. There are organizations, professional organizations, like the, there's one that Family Practitioners, I can't remember the exact name, but they're, they're putting it through. But again, it all goes back to Congress, and those who have the money control the Congress.
All right. Thank you. All right. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gettings?
Yes.
Councilwoman Warback?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bliss?
No.
Mayor Graffstein?
I vote no. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Soltis. All right. Next up, we have item two, City Manager, MERS Plan Adoption Agreement Addendums. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
The city of Madison Heights utilizes the services of the municipal employees retirement system, also known as MERS, which offers participating municipalities a variety of retirement which offers participating municipalities a variety of retirement benefits on behalf of eligible employees. Effective January the first, MERS is implementing several changes to its defined benefit plans. And they are requiring us to submit an updated adoption agreement, um, approved by City Council. In completing these addendums, we have not changed anything about our benefit programs, but instead are just clarifying how they have always been administered. So based on the fact that there are no changes to the way these programs are to be administered, staff and I recommend approval of these adoption agreement addendums with MERS.
Great, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilor Warback?
I move that, uh, council approves the adoption agreement addendum with MERS.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilor Warback?
I just had a couple of questions when I was reading it through, and, um, I'm certainly not an HR, uh, expert. Um, so I would love to know, when I was reading through some of the addendum things, I was trying to understand, um, the, uh, there was a, like, a service credit exemption. It was, they were, uh, on each page, there was a service credit exemption, um, for, uh, workman's comp leave, but not for FMLA. And I was just trying to understand how, what difference was going on there. And, um, just would love some clarification on that and what that means.
Sure. So all of these leave times and if it gets counted into your, um, FAC or your pension credit, whether it be defined contribution or defined benefit, are controlled by the union agreements. And, um, short-term and long-term disability are excluded. Um, because you actually are supposed to be working to earn service credit. So if you're on short-term or long-term, it's like taking sick leave and you're not here. Um, worker's comp is like working, so you do get credit for that. So that is not excluded. And then only unpaid family medical is excluded.
Okay, so the paid family medical even, when, when individuals, employees of the city are on family medical leave, is that?
Basically, any time that they get paid for gets counted. So if I take a month off and I have two weeks of sick time, my two weeks count. But if I'm off for a whole month, then my two weeks that I don't get paid, they don't count. Because I'm not here earning wages and earning earned service credit time. So basically, if you just think about it, if you're getting paid, whether you're on leave time or not, you're earning days worked. And if you're not getting paid, you're not earning days worked.
So if an individual is on FMLA for 12 weeks, you know, after having a child, or, um, if they have saved enough time off to do six weeks, the other six, they would not accrue, um, service credit, correct? But it wouldn't, it wouldn't, they wouldn't, like, be no longer eligible for their.
No, it has nothing to do with that. It's just how many days get counted for your vesting and that type of thing whenever you actually retire.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. You. There any other discussion, any other questions by council? Alright, seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilman Gettings? Counselor Warback?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltes?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, third report is Human Resources Director Resolution, opting out of PA 152. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. Public Act 152 as amended limits the amount that public employers pay towards employee medical benefits beginning January the first of 2012. City council is required to make an election each year of its choice for compliance to this public act. Given that all of the city's collective bargaining agreements approved by city council provide that employees pay 10% of their premiums, council is requested to opt out of Public Act 152 as allowable under the statute for fiscal year 2021.
Alright, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Bliss?
Uh, I move that we opt out of Public Act 152.
Thank you. Your support?
Your Honor?
Councilor Warback?
I support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and supported. Is there any discussion from council?
Your Honor?
Mr. Sherman?
Point of information to council, and that is five votes are required to pass this resolution.
Great, thank you. Any comments from council members? Alright, seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Counselor Warback?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltes?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Gettings? Mayor Graffstein?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have bids and awards and purchases. First one is from the police chief for Clemis, the radio equipment upgrade. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Um, Clemis is upgrading our police radio system in 2021 by use of a 911 surcharge funding and other grants. Clemis is not eligible to purchase radio equipment for the participating municipalities, including our officers, reserve officers, and reserve vehicles. This is the same for the fire department. Clemis has negotiated with Motorola to pass on an additional 10% discount on all equipment to these local governments for their officers and fleets, only if these orders are placed by December 1st of 2020. This equates to a savings of $28,421 if the city chooses to take advantage. We have started budgeting for this purchase this year with all the final phases planned to be budgeted for in fiscal year 2022. Therefore, to make this purchase early by the deadline, we will require a budget amendment. So the current fiscal year has $55,000 budgeted in, in the fire department towards the radio upgrade. And then next year, we were planning to budget 255,000 in fiscal year 2022, based on the estimates we had received. If council wants to approve this purchase, a budget amendment would be required to amend the current year budget, fiscal year 2021, by $174,302 to the police budget and $36,990 to the fire department. And then no money would be budgeted in fiscal year 2022. Based on the savings and the increased price that we expect to happen after cal- in calendar year 2021, staff and I recommend that city council make the necessary budget amendments and approve the advanced purchase of this Clemis upgraded radio system from Motorola for a total not to exceed 255,791 with a Michigan Public Safety Communication Systems of $10,500.
Alright, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Uh, Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, I'd like to move that we, uh, make the necessarily, necessary budget amendments and approve the advanced purchase of the Clemis upgraded radios from Motorola for a total not to exceed $255,791. A Michigan Public Safety Communication System of $10,500.
Interrupted before you so eloquently said all that. We actually need two motions. We need one motion for budget amendment that requires four votes of five votes of council, and then we need a motion for the purchase.
So I'll amend my motion to the first motion, which is to make the necessary budget amendment requirements.
Alright, thank you. Uh, is there support?
Your Honor?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Bliss?
I'll second.
Alright, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alright, so this is for the, uh, budget amendment. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Uh, Mayor Portem Soltes?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Gettings?
Yes.
Counselor Warback?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Is there a second motion?
Your Honor. I'll make the second motion to purchase the Clemis upgraded radios from Motorola for a total not to exceed $255,791 and Michigan Public Safety Communication System of $10,500.
Great, thank you. And is there support for that motion?
Your Honor?
Counselor Warback?
I support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded for the purchase. Is there any discussion? Alright, seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Gettings?
Yes.
Councilor Warback?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next up from the city manager is Safe Built Contract Inspection and Building Official Services. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Safe Built has been providing the plumbing and mechanical plan reviews and inspection services in Madison Heights since 2010. Building plan review and inspection services since 2013, and building official services since 2014. And they also fill in for electrical inspection and permit technician services since 2015. We have been very pleased with the services as provided, and we've had no complaints. They're very consistent and professional. Um, recently, with the city's reorganization of the CED and planning function, um, we had a long conversation with Safe Built and actually asked them to also take over the landlord inspection services. Um, this requires an amendment to the agreement, and we, um, negotiated a new agreement with them. So I'm bringing that to council tonight. This new agreement adds the landlord and hotel inspection services with backup inspections for 67, 60 an hour. It would increase the building official fee about 2% from $12,408 per month to $12,656 per month. It increases the hourly rate for mechanical and plumbing inspection and plan review by $2.60 an hour from $65. And contract staff hourly rate increases based on CPI. So based on the excellent services and the decrease in cost of, cost over providing in-house inspection and building services, staff and I recommend city council approve this contract amendment with Safe Built. With any future contract amendments would be subject to city council approval. And I do have two representatives from Safe Built here today, if there are any questions. The, and I would like to add one thing. I was shortening my comments, so I skipped a critical part. The last budget or the last contract amendment was approved by city council in 2016. And that was the, um, last time we adjusted any rates or changed any services provided. But we have, um, the building official has taken on a wider variety of services as well.
Alright, thank you. Uh, what is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Your Honor?
Councilor Warback?
Um, I, uh, move that city council approves the contract amendment with Safe Built for any future contract, uh, with Safe Built, period.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
I'll second.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Sherman?
The, the motion really should be to approve the professional services agreement. Um, that is the agenda item, not future contracts. Um, I just want, ask the maker of the motion and support to agree to that clarification. My, my office has reviewed the agreement. Nick Krasowski reviewed it and made various amendments to the agreement, all of which, um, all of which were approved by SafeCo.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Sherman. Counselor Warback, uh, do you agree to that change?
I do.
Alright, Councilwoman Clark, do you agree as well?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Is there any discussion from council?
Uh, Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
Yeah, in, in normal terms, I, I would say that we should have, uh, and maybe we didn't, it's just not in the report, but doing some due diligence on what, uh, rates are in the market. I do understand that we, you know, we're really happy with them, uh, and so maybe that's something we'll do down the road. But one thing that concerns me about this agreement is, uh, section six uh, and termination. Uh, it says that either party may terminate this agreement for any reason with or without cause uh, with 30 days written notice. And that concerns me on their side. Uh, because a huge, I, I mean, a huge amount of work we're now shifting, that's critical work, uh, like those hotel inspection services, those are things that, that help to keep our citizens safe. Uh, and so I'm a little concerned at having a 30-day-out clause that they can give us written notice. And then we're having to scramble to figure that out because we don't have anybody in-house. I'm not sure if that's something, and I don't mind voting to approve, uh, and, and having legal work it out. But I am very concerned that they could write us a notice, and then 30 days later, we don't have this, the service being provided, and we're scrambling.
Your Honor?
Thank you. Yes, please, Mr. Sherman.
The original contract as drafted by Safe Built called for a 90-day notice of written termination. And, um, I believe this, the city suggested that we change it to 30-day. And Safe Co., Safe Built agreed.
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I'm very comfortable with that on the city's side as far as an opt-out, uh, with or without cause. You know, it's obviously beneficial for us on that side to have that 30-day. But given the scope of work that's being done, it concerns me that we wouldn't have enough time to find a replacement if they issued us an opt-out for 30 days. So, you know, whether it's splitting the difference or, you know, going back with the 90, I, I just don't know that we're protected in case something were to happen and they cease being able to deliver those services through that written notice. You know, it just puts us into a bind.
Alright, Mrs. Marsh, did you want to comment on that? Or have Safe Built?
There's a representative from Safe Built here, but no, that was the legal suggestion, was that we change the termination. That's fairly standard. So I did submit that to them as a change, and they changed it. There's representatives from Safe Built here. If you would like to hear from them, Paul Featherstone is here as well as Kelly.
Sure, um, if one of you could just address that, that would be great. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor. Uh, to, uh, Councilwoman Bliss. Um, I'm Paul Featherstone, a regional operations manager from Michigan. I actually used to be your building official and your building inspector years ago before I was with Safe Built. So, just, you know, Madison Heights is an outstanding, uh, partner of ours and has been since 2010. And we've been increasing services there to help out the citizens and also the, the external and internal customers. Just so you know, Madison Heights is also, um, intertwined with multiple different operations that we have in the area. So it's not just a standalone. We also service, we service Madison Heights with some of our inspectors through our Troy operation, through Ferndale, Bloomfield Hills, Beverly Hills, and multiple different areas. So for us to just decide one day that we don't want to be with Madison Heights and leave in 30 days, uh, actually is, is going to be virtually impossible to do that. So a 90 days is very difficult, just to kind of get up and walk away to actually to take the, the information you have and either switch it to an in-house or to another provider. But if we just got up and walked away from you for 30 and 30 days and just threw our hands up, we wouldn't be in business anymore. Other cities and other municipalities would see something like that and state, oh, we don't want to be with the company that does that. And we would never just up and leave our car customers like that at all.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Featherstone. I thought I recognized your name from, uh, years on. Alright, uh, are there any other, uh, points of discussion? Mr. Bliss, any other concerns that you have you want to address?
Just a clarification, Your Honor. I, I'm not saying that they will walk away and leave or that it'd even be good business to do so. Uh, I'm just stating the contract language concerns me because it does leave that opening. Um, you know, and there's a number of things that could happen that might enable that to take place. Uh, and I'm just a little concerned about that contract clause. But if our, our legal team is, is confident there, uh, and our city manager is confident as well, I'll, I'll vote to support it. It's just the one thing in this contract that I saw that made me a little nervous, given the scope of work that's being added to their plates.
Your Honor?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sherman?
Well, question maybe of Mr. Featherstone, based on his comment. Maybe the fix would be that even though there would be a 30-day notice provision either way, it would be with the understanding that until such time that we have otherwise provided for those services that Safe Built would continue, would continue to, uh, perform the services requested.
What I can say on that is, um, yeah, excuse me too, I'm also under the weather, so I have a little rough night tonight. So we would never just get up and walk away from our customers. We've never done that. Now, we have in, in, uh, in the past in different areas that we've had a customer come to us and want to get out of the 90 days and go in a different direction or bring something in-house, and we worked right up to that 90-day point to help them. Uh, for us just to get up and walk away, again, we've never done that. And, well, I guess we would have to have something in the contract to state that, you know, if it was going to be over 90 days, or what if it went on to six months, 180 days? How long would you want us to, to, to continue to be? How long would you want us to continue to be there? We don't, we don't want to go anywhere. We want to keep being your provider.
Well, we can work that out.
Yeah.
I mean, we can take the comments and work that out before we.
So tonight, so tonight, if, if, if council were to approve the professional services agreement, it would be with the understanding that, that Safe Built and the city is going to work out arrangements on, on paragraph six of the agreement to address that issue.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments by council or concerns? All right, seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes, Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geddings.
Yes.
Councilor Warbach.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bliss.
Yes.
Mayor Grabstein.
I vote yes, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Featherstone, for coming, coming here this evening.
I'd be honored to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have minutes. We have the special city council meeting minutes of October twenty-six. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark.
I'd like to move that we approve the special city council meeting minutes of ten twenty-six to two thousand twenty.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support, or, Your Honor?
Mayor Portem Soltis, support. Thank you. All right, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilwoman Geddings.
Yes.
Councilor Warbach.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Grabstein.
Oh, yes, motion carries. Thank you. And then our last item would be the regular city council meeting minutes from October twenty-six. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Mayor Portem Soltis.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of ten twenty-six twenty, please.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark.
I'll support.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilor Warbach.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geddings.
Yes.
Mayor Grabstein.
I vote yes, motion carries. Thank you. All right, seeing as there is no more business before us, I invite closing comments, and this evening we will start with you, Mr. Bliss.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to wish Councilman Corbett well. Hope he's, hope he's doing well, and, you know, I give my best to, to him and his family. Missed you tonight. You know, normally Councilman Corbett goes first, so I'd be remiss if I didn't start off by saying something, wishing him well. Second, the discussed Get Well Urgent Care Clinic is in my neighborhood. I'm not close to where the residents who are direct neighbors on it were speaking, but my, my kids and I were actually in the park over by Edmondson the other day seeing those cars and seeing the lineup. So it's, it's something that is critically important to me. That's the, the type of action that our residents deserve from us as a city, and frankly, that's where we really need to invest some time. We need to get creative. We've done that with other businesses. I'm not sure if it's more based on patrols and leveraging the, the resources we have, or if maybe there's a creative ordinance that we can pass that would help to support our ability to crack down there. But in either direction, I, I'd like us to really dig into it. I know Chief Haynes already is. But if our, our legal team could as well, that's something that, you know, directly affects our residents and would make a really big impact if we could, you know, stop that even in any capacity, whether it's leveraging existing laws or if it's a new ordinance that we can create. In the meantime, I urge residents to make your voice heard, not just calling the Oakland County Health Department or, you know, our police hotline, but I'd also encourage residents to call the Better Business Bureau and make public reviews about some of this on, on their website, any public review site, including Google. Let them know. Maybe they'd be more amenable to, you know, responding and taking action within their business if they're seeing it affecting their bottom line based on some of those reviews being out there. So I'd encourage you to do that. Maybe they'll listen to that. I don't know. But in the meantime, we will be working on that as a city, and I, I hope to have a broader discussion on, on something or at least an update, you know, coming here shortly. Second thing I want to talk about is the Pumpkin Walk. The Pumpkin Walk was excellent. My family thoroughly enjoyed it. Big props to the project chair, Lori Gerald, the rest of the arts board, and all of the volunteers who made it so outstanding. More than four hundred people came out. It was socially distanced. It was outside, and it was a really great time had, had by all. I know my kids thoroughly enjoyed it and, you know, probably more so because of the, the candy, but I think for a lot of reasons, it was incredible. And so I, I know I talked about it in the last meeting, and I want to make sure that we get a, a thanks resolution out to those project chairs as well. As everybody knows, it's hard to run any type of programming that's safe these days, and so I'd love to acknowledge the efforts of the volunteers who put in their time. Next, there's going to be a socially-distanced mural celebration in Rosie's Park Sunday at noon to commemorate the Finnish mural Nature's Response. The artist Jennifer Ramirez is going to be there. Myself and some other members of council will be there, and we'll have representatives from the mural's major donor, Holistic Industries, that will also be in attendance. So come out. It's only going to be like thirty to forty minutes long, but definitely come out here from the artist and enjoy that work of art if you haven't otherwise seen it. Finally, the tree lighting is happening as a drive-through event, and I'm, I'm really stoked about that. I had an arts board meeting earlier tonight where we discussed what we'll be doing during that event, and I can't wait to see all of the creative ways our city groups are able to turn that event into something really powerful for the community. Because it's drive-through, it's going to be incredibly safe, but it's still going to enable us to have that tree lighting event and bring the community together in a way that I just know that the community is craving for. So I'm thankful to staff. I'm thankful, so thankful to my peers on council for all coming together to help get this done and enabling us to have an event at a time where we have to get really creative to do so. And I'm also thankful for the residents and their support for these types of events and their willingness that when they do attend, they're doing it in a really safe way with masks and distancing in place. And so I'm so thankful for that, and I appreciate every one of you who've come out to these events and done so safely protecting your neighbors. That's really critical for us as we move forward in these, you know, really weird pandemic times. So that's it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. Councilor Warbach.
Thanks, Your Honor. I also want to go so much what Mr. Bliss said. Wish Mr. Corbett well and hope he is going to heal quickly. I also want to note that there are several groups within the city that are, are working to raise money for the Goodfellows for the holiday season. I encourage residents to find a way to engage with the Goodfellows if they can and, and help to bring some holiday cheer to those that are, are, are hope, are, are in need in our community and, and to, to do it if you can through the Goodfellows. They're a really wonderful partner with our community. Next, I wanted to say congratulations to those who ran in the recent election for Madison District School Board, and thank you to all of those who ran and, and did not win. But it takes a lot to run for office at every level. It takes a lot from your family and from your, from your personal life and, and all of those things. And so I just, I want to encourage everyone who, who ran and did not win. First time I ran for something for the city council seat, I did not win. And, but it, simply running puts a different conversation in the, in the community, and it is important to do that. And I thank you for those that ran, did not win. And I say congratulations to those who did win this recent election. I hope and pray that, that you will bring good things to our community, to our schools, to our students, to our parents, and I am, I'm really hopeful for the future. As far as the issue with the urgent care on Twelve Mile, I have heard from Becky a couple times recently, and and I actually, I also live in the neighborhood nearby, just a couple streets over. And this afternoon, I was headed out to somewhere else, and I drove past that line of, of individuals waiting not far away from one another on Twelve Mile, waiting for that, to get into the clinic. And I pulled into the street and actually kind of pulled around, and I pulled up there, and I just kind of sat on the street and watched for a while. And one of the residents, I don't believe he's here tonight, but the resident whose house that was, it was kind of idling in front of, so I'm peeking out his door. So I jumped out of the car, and I told him, I introduced myself, and I said, you know, I'm here just watching what's going on because I've heard that this is a problem. And he told me, oh, you know, he just really, really expressed his concern for it. He also has young children. He can't let them play in the front yard. As I stood there and watched, the, the line crept closer and closer and closer to his home. And there, we have to find a solution to this. It's unacceptable. And I appreciate that the, the chief and the city manager, they have, I know they've been working on it, and I know that they're trying to find solutions. And sometimes, you know, our hands are tied a little bit with as far as the, like, what we as a governmental institution are allowed to do and, and to, and to implement onto a private business. And so I appreciate the, the creative problem-solving that they've been doing to try and come up with solutions. And I, I know, as Mr. Bliss said, that the, sometimes it's public pressure. Sometimes it's we have to, individuals within the community have to hit them and their bottom line and to pressure them to change their business practices, and sometimes that's what it takes. And, but we are, I am committed to making sure that we use every resource, both official, unofficial, as private citizens, as a community, that we come together and, and figure out a way to make this, find a solution to this problem because it is impacting children and families and individuals right here in Madison Heights, that it couldn't be more important to make sure that, like, it's, for me, it's about, you know, our city government, where it's about making it quality of life for everybody in the city better. And this problem is creating problems for the quality of life for these residents, and I'm not okay with just letting it go. So I just want to say to all of you that are here tonight, thank you for coming. Thank you for reaching out. Thank you for speaking about what, what's going on, and I'm committed to making sure that we figure out a way to, to, to fix this because you don't deserve this, and we need to, we need to do it. And also, finally, we are in a pandemic still, and I know so many of us, it's, it's exhausting. We, you know, in, in the United States, sometimes it's easy to be like, I'm tired of this. It should be over now. And we are all so tired of this, and, but unfortunately, it's not over. And, you know, I know I have three small children. They miss their fam, their, their friends. They miss visiting with their family. We, we talked about recently, we're like, oh, I can't see JoJo, their ninety-four-year-old great-grandmother lives in Georgia. We see her usually a couple times a year. We haven't been able to see her now for, for over a year. And, you know, some of these things that are, are just really heartbreaking, and I know, I know it's so hard. But I'm just going to say here in this meeting, and anybody who's listening, that one of the things that we can do as individual citizens is just to wear a mask and be responsible. If we want COVID cases to go down, if we want to eventually be able to go back to some kind of more normal situation, we have to take personal responsibility, and that includes wearing a mask, keeping socially distant from one another, and, and, and doing everything we can. And I just have to say, wearing a mask is a very small thing that you can do. What, but what's most important is wearing a mask properly over your, both your nose and your mouth. It is, it is the socially responsible thing to do. It's the caring thing to do. It's a loving thing to do. I think we're all called to love our neighbors, and that's just one way that we can do it. It's not about me. It's not about you. It's about all of us. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Sherman, anything this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, a couple of quick comments. First of all, would like to wish Councilman Corbett a speedy recovery. Secondly, as a member of the Election Commission, kudos to our clerk, Cheryl Rotman, and a great, big thank you to all of the poll workers and volunteers as, as, even though there were record number of votes, everything in general ran very smoothly for a presidential election. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Marsh.
Everybody covered just about everything except for Veterans Day. So Mary Daly, along with some help from Sean Fleming, put together a very nice video of the veterans in Madison Heights as well as our employees, and we are going to be featuring that on our social media starting on Wednesday morning. So keep an eye out for that, and if you know a veteran, give them thanks all the time, but especially this upcoming Wednesday.
Thank you. Clerk, Mrs. Rotman.
Thank you. I just want to thank the many poll workers that gave their time and their talent to, especially in the middle of a pandemic, to ensure everyone's vote was counted this election day. I wanted to thank my staff, my deputy clerk, Annette Voucher, Amy Bessler, and Peg Marantet for working tirelessly on this election. They went above and beyond to make sure the citizens of Madison Heights had, sorry, had an election that was conducted with transparency and accuracy. I also want to thank the city manager and city council for their support of the office and for making sure that we got the necessary equipment to process the massive increase in absentee ballots. That was a lifesaver. And finally, thanks to the residents for coming out to vote in record numbers, whether it was in person or by early absentee. The city had ten thousand and seven absentee ballots issued. We had nine thousand six hundred and eighty returned. If that was a return rate of ninety-seven percent, the highest I've ever had, ever. In a total, there were, in total, there was fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-three voters for a total turnout of sixty-eight percent. Sixty-three percent voted absentee and thirty-seven percent voted at the precinct. So it was a tremendous effort by all involved. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Geddings.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just want to congratulate the new president, Joe Biden, and his staff. I'm sure he's going to do a good job. It was a tough choice for me this time. I thought both candidates brought something good to the table, but our election was done with fairly good speed and a lot of work by a lot of people, including our clerk's office, Cheryl and her team. But it's a great process and a good country to live in. I thank you, Mrs. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Clark.
Yes, so I'm entering into this week all amped off of the exhaustion that came out of last week. So I also want to congratulate the newly-elected president, but no more than I want to congratulate the newly-elected vice president, who is the first female president, or first female vice president, also first female of color to enter into the White House in that manner, and it's a very exciting thing for all of us women, regardless of our political affiliation, because now the foot's in the door, and now the rest of us can come too. So it's a very, it's a very exciting prospect for me and my children who followed the election very closely. I also want to thank all of city council for making the decision tonight to vote, to support the resolution that Mayor Portem Soltis brought to the table to support Medicare for All because while it is largely symbolic, your vote on it is also symbolic of, of your take on it. And so I really appreciate that we were able to get that across. while it is largely symbolic, your vote on it is also symbolic of, of your take on it. And so I really appreciate that we were able to get that across the table. I can't wait till it gets in our legislators' hands, and I'm not ready to just stop there. So Dave, whatever you, whatever you want to take to them, I'm here with you a hundred percent. I got your back, and I'll take it to the table. I'm excited that we came to our first city council meeting, hitting the ground running, because while presidential elections are very important, local, like change happens on the federal level locally first. So when we start to implement these changes and resolutions, and we start to draw our own guidelines and boundaries and write our own social contracts, other cities start to follow suit, and then states follow suit, and then before you know it, the whole country is changing before your eyes. So I'm excited to be part of that process, and I'm glad we passed that resolution this evening.
Great, thank you. Mayor Portem Soltis?
Thank you, your honor. I just want to go back. I want to thank the council members for indulging and, and with, you know, my comments, lengthy comments, and, and I'm glad that we were able to pass it. I just want to let you know that in the resolution itself, it does point to, you know, the Medicare for All Act of twenty nineteen, which is a House Resolution thirteen eighty-four, and then the Senate eleven twenty-nine. So those are legislations that were created. They weren't put forth because they didn't have enough support. But that's, you know, the movement we're trying to make, at least in, in this instance. And then there is the State House Bill six-two-eight-five of twenty eighteen, which establishes a statewide single payer program called My Care. So, you know, these, these are real things, these are real issues, real solutions. So hopefully that, at some point, that will, you know, transpire. I also want to, I also want to, excuse me. Oh, I want to thank Cheryl, the city clerk, her staff, and all her volunteers. They did a fantastic job. Absolutely fantastic job, regardless of what the current White House holder is saying or kicking and screaming. But anyhow, I was put on the, with Larry Sherman, I was put on the Elections Committee overview. I think that's the name of it, for, I think, the last four years or something. And at first I thought, well, you know, this position is, is, you know, not, not the most popular one, but, you know, I did learn a lot from Cheryl, and we did, you know, tediously go through the process. And so after, you know, last week, what happened and what's currently in all the, the hoopla and everything, I, I was able to explain to people, you know, the certain processes that are, that go about and had a better understanding. So then, you know, all these fabrications that get, get out of hand. So, you know, I appreciate all that as well for the city clerk and Larry Sherman.
Thank you.
And I think, I think that's about it. Thank you, your honor.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. I would like to also wish Councilman Corbett a speedy recovery. Would be nice to have a full complement of council. It seems that last few meetings, we continually have somebody missing. So hopefully he will be back, and everyone will be back at our next meeting. And I'd like to put out a big thank you to Cheryl Rotman and her staff. You did a phenomenal job. I voted in person, as I generally do. My husband and I went, we waited in line. Everyone seemed to be wearing masks, seemed to be keeping a distance in between everybody voting. There was someone who went and wiped everything down. So it all seemed very good. We all got our pen. There was the, you know, take a clean pen, put in, put it in here when it's dirty. So I felt very comfortable with that. And from most of the people that I spoke to, I think everybody that I talked to, you know, people went quicker than I did. Some people went maybe a little bit slower, but it was all, all around. It was a good process. So hats off to you, Cheryl. You guys did a great, great job. I hope everybody is catching up on sleep, because I can only imagine how much sleep you did not get over the last few weeks. Just want to thank you for that. I, I want, I want to say to the, the people who live by that urgent care, I, I, I don't even know what to tell you anymore, except that we are, we are working on it. I know the chief spoke. Everybody is frustrated. I've spoken to, to people who live in the area. I drive by there. I bike by there on a regular basis, and I see it, and I am open to any legal suggestions on what we can do, you know, whether it is a, a letter writing to the county, or if it is, you know, if there's some kind of ordinance that we can change, that you can't have more than X number of people outside your business. If we put Xs down, and they have to be standing six feet apart, and there's a thousand-dollar fine if they're not. I, I'm, I'm open to any suggestions from, from council, from staff, from, from residents. And, and residents, when you, when you call in, the frustration you hear is not that you are calling, it's that this is happening, and that we're all trying to muddle through this and figure this out. I, I have a concern that there's going to be another urgent care that may decide, wow, these guys are making so much money. We should do the same thing and stop taking appointments, or not, not worry about appointments as well, and then we're going to end up with someone else doing this. So really, any, any ideas that people have, let me know. Let staff know. Contact someone and, and let us know what you're thinking. With respect to the Medicare for All, the healthcare, you know, it's, reiterate something that I already said, which is, I think, you know, it's good business practices. Good, good businesses understand that prevention and healthcare is good for businesses. You know, healthy employee is going to do more and be more productive, and it's more fiscally responsible, and it's better for, for the economy. And I know people who want to start a business, but they can't do it because once they figure out all their finances, the big question, because well, what comes, what am I going to pay for my healthcare? And I know people who are at that point where they want to retire, and they have that same situation. And in a previous life, I did retirement planning, and it was in a different situation, and the question of healthcare was never as significant as it is now. If someone goes to retire, and they need to have an extra one, two, maybe three thousand dollars a month in order to pay for their healthcare, where they can't, they're working, they're working longer, and we, we do need to have something. For people who are interested in learning more about this, Mr. Soltis mentioned the book by Wendell Potter. He's got a few of them out there. There's also Sally Pipes is also another author that you might want to look at as well. So there are different resources, and like I said, Mr. Soltis, I think you had mentioned there was a group of medical professionals who are lobbying. When you get a chance, I don't know when he's going to do it again because of COVID, but Congressman Levin used to hold coffee times, and it was a great time to talk to him about concerns that you have in, in the city and in his district. And so that would be a time Jim Ellison as well, our state rep, would also hold coffee hours. So if you're looking to talk to someone who is in the position to sponsor one of these bills or to vote on one of these bills, those are great resources to contact as well. And then finally, I want to tell everybody about a really good problem that I had over the weekend. I had rake with the mayor, and I didn't know how many people to expect. And so we said that we, we would do twenty houses. When I did this a few years ago with the former mayor, we had about ten people who volunteered, and we ended up having fifty people, probably more than fifty people who came out. And I stood there and said, okay, I have a really great problem. And this is the kind of problem that we all want to have, is too many volunteers coming. And you can't have too many volunteers, so I gave everybody a couple of houses to go to, and they went out, and they went above and beyond. They did the house that they were assigned, and then they did neighbors' houses. One of our troops ended up going just back to her neighborhood and doing houses there. So it was really great, and it was a beautiful day. And we had, we had all sorts of residents who came out. We had someone who came out with her young children, and then we had a resident who's in his eighties who came out, and he contacted me, and he said he wanted to help rake, and he did. He came out and he helped. So that was great. We had football players and volleyball players. We had honor students. We had, I think we had the families of board members from both the Lampier and the Madison District were there. So it was really, it was really great to see Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, everybody. You know, just sort of pitching in and helping. So I, it was great. It just, you know, gave me this really great, great sense of community. And, you know, it sounds like there are other, well, I know there are other programs that are going on. The food pantry is, they're working on having meals for, I believe it's a hundred and fifty families. So if you want to, if you want to contact them, if you want to do something, there's various groups in the city that are collecting different items. They've asked, you know, this group to collect a hundred and fifty sticks of butter, and this group to collect a hundred and fifty boxes of stuffing, and this kind of thing. So that's all coming together. But if, you know, if, if you're interested in helping with that, you know, that's a great group to get in touch with. And then, as I believe it was Counselor Rorback mentioned, the Goodfellows are also doing something, you know, so that every child has, has a holiday. And believe it or not, even though it's seventy degrees out, we are only what, eight weeks away, not even eight weeks, six, seven weeks away from, from the new year. So you know, it was, it was interesting going around and seeing all these people out in their shorts, putting up their inflatable snowmen. So I'm, I'm going to just say, you know, enjoy, enjoy the weather while we can. Get out there and enjoy this. The time is now, time is now nine twelve. Their next meeting will be on Monday, November twenty-third. This, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and good night.